Welcome to Trot Talk, an equestrian conversation with the American Saddleback Horse Association. I'm your host, Tuffy Owens. For our podcast, we're exploring the equestrians behind the horses, influencers in the industry, sharing their stories and giving a leg up to our community. Well, hey, everybody, and welcome to a special episode of Trot Talk. We're recording a few episodes here this week via Zoom. Kristin Kader, Marion Evanor, and Melissa Moore this week will record. Trot Talk is presented by the American Saddleback Horse Association and is made possible by a grant from the United States Equestrian Federation. So we thank them for their support, and we'll present Marion Evanor here in just a moment. Well, thanks for tuning into Trot Talk, everybody. Joining us is Marion Evanor of High Caliber Stables. Excited to talk to you guys today. How are you guys doing down in North Carolina?
We're doing good. It's a little rainy down here, but we're hanging in.
Well, the one thing we like to do to kind of get started is explain how you got here. How did you guys get started with horses? Did you grow up with horses? Did you grow up showing? Mary, what was kind of your story growing up?
So I'm born and raised in Fall River Mills, California. But when you say California, people think of San Francisco and the beach. I am northeastern California, about four hours from the Oregon border. And I always tell people we're 50 miles from Mount Shasta, a ski resort. So like northern, northern California. And it was a farming rural community. I also have to say that I had public school. There were 35 people in my graduating high school class, public school.
In public school?
Yeah. So anyway, actually, I got started because I, of course, had loved horses. And I actually started with a lady named Linda Harris, and she had the Giddy Up Whoa Riding School.
Giddy Up Whoa, that's amazing.
Yeah. And it was barrel racing, and I was very, very bad at it. And the only person that cheered for me was my mother. And the fastest I ever went was 35 seconds. The average was 18 when you do the barrels. The only thing I was good at was goat tying, except I felt bad for the goats, so I would untie them before my score got in. So needless to say, I was not your rodeo gal, but I love horses. Yeah.
I think Kelly Cragle was the rodeo queen of California. That was not you?
No, that was not me. And so my mom had a fellow, my mom was a schoolteacher, and she had a good friend and schoolteacher that knew someone in Red Bluff, California, and her name was Shirley Hall. And that's how I, and Red Bluff, just so you know, is two hours away, two lane roads, not like, yeah. I mean, when I mean rural northern California, that's what it was. And so met her and then eventually purchased the horse High Caliber. And then, and that was an Arabian, did Western, and all different trail horsemanship and all that different stuff like that. So that was my entrance into showing horses and all of that. So that's kind of my foundation.
So underrated, underrated, underappreciated, underrepresentative area of California. You, Evan, same thing with Illinois being downstate, right?
Yes, yes. So I grew up in Springfield, Illinois, and the way I got started in horses is we did the, did several summers where we did the big jump in the station wagon and go out west vacations with my brothers and mom and dad. And I took a trail ride, I believe it was in Custer State Park in Wyoming. And I really enjoyed that. So then I came home and I asked my mom if I could take riding lessons. And she was a nurse and worked with a woman named Sharon Rubsum in just outside of Springfield, who had some horses. So I started taking riding lessons with her and rode with her for several years. And I got to show occasionally. I had no idea that the show world existed other than magazines, you know, than saddle and bridle. And I think saddle and bridle is the only one that I got at that point, but was enamored by that. And then from there, I spent some summers with Kathy McKinley, who has Show Horse Tac. And worked for her, and she helped me lease horses from William Woods and show them. And I'd caught the bug by then.
Now, the Orr Building on the Illinois State Fairgrounds, any relation?
I don't, I don't believe so. My dad's family is from, now, there is an Orr Research Farm in western Illinois. It's University of Illinois that is property my great grandfather and grandfather sold to, but nothing worth horses, nothing on the state fairground.
Well, you know, when we worked, we worked a horse show a few years ago, and you were talking about judging the horse show and seeing these guys that you were, you know, kind of grown up looking up to. Talk a little bit about that, some of the influences on you as you were kind of growing up and watching this all transpire.
Well, the Missouri State Fair is a particularly special one for me. That was, I believe, maybe the first Blue Ribbon that I ever won. And it was the consolation class at the Missouri State Fair. So, but yeah, that's, that's, talk about coming full circle. So when you watch all these horse trainers that you look up to and you think, you know, it's almost like looking up to, you know, someone you enjoy musically or movie star or something like that. You watch them and watch them, and you never think you can get there. And then when we come around and we see people that are somewhat our peers, or at least we work in the same space together, it's very humbling to see people that you grew up watching and admiring and envying to a certain extent. It's wild that to be able to, and then to judge, to judge at the Missouri State Fair. Although some people might say, well, you know, the Missouri State Fair, but you know, talk about coming full circle to be a kid there.
Like Bob Bryson and Virgil.
Oh, yeah, you know, to talk to folks like Virgil Helm and Bob Bryson and folks like that, that you just looked at, and you're like, wow, those guys are so, I mean, it is, it's a little bit of a rock star kind of thing. You look, you look up to people and then to work in the same world that they do now that you're, again, Mary and I talk all the time, we don't think, we think we just graduated from college, but you know, we're 40 and I guess we're supposed to be adults now. But if this is what adulthood is, I guess it is what it is now. So, but it's humbling for sure.
Well, how did you both end up at William Woods? I mean, what was that, what was that path like for the both of you? How did you decide to go to be at Camp Billy Twigs?
For me, my dad, Dan Markham, we call him Dan Markham from Fall River Mills, California, because he still introduces himself that way, even though he's in northern, North Carolina all the time. I always wanted to be a horse trainer. And so that's, I've never even thought of something else I wanted to do in my life. But my dad has a PhD in plant pathology and is big in time into education and said, you're going to go to college. Well, of course, I thought I was going to go to college. Well, his version of going to college in the rest of the world is a little different. I applied to 12 schools and we visited all 12. And, and so that was, and then as we visited them, which actually ended up being like everybody, you learn your parents know more than you want to give them credit for. You know, I went to, of course, a lot of animal science programs and a lot of equine science programs that were definitely based on veterinary practice, you know? And I wanted applied riding. And so in all honesty, this is a really funny story, is I was going up for the Inter Mountain Fair Queen Pageant in Fall River Mills, California.
All right, inter mountain, okay.
I was planning and had a great scholarship to go to Stevens College. And there was a woman named Jerita Gates. And if you know the group Bread, David Gates, and it's the song, I'm a terrible singer, but like, I wanna make it with you. It's like a 70s group. Yeah. So anyway, I've been slapping.
My wife, the singer and goat roper.
So she came up to me, thank you, Evan. So she came up to me and she said, hey, Mary. And she said, I hear you're wanting to go to Stevens, because of course it was on my little speech. And, and I said, yes. And I said, I've got a great scholarship. I'm so excited and everything like that. She says, I'd really like you to see William Woods. And so I was going to go back one more time to a scholarship, like program at Stevens. And she, her mother, lived in Fulton, Missouri. And so she said, well, how about, because it's only 30 minutes away, you go to William Woods? Well, my dad looked up William Woods and saw a book that a woman named Gail Lampy wrote. And Dan Markham likes professors that write books.
Ooh, there you go.
And not only was I required to read the book, I was required to go to William Woods. And I flew out there by myself. And I had a good experience at Stevens, but I walked on the campus of William Woods and I knew it was home.
That was it?
And it just, it just suited me. So, so that's why I got, how I got to William Woods. So.
That's awesome. Evan, what about you?
I, I wanted to be, I wanted to be a horse trainer. I remember about sophomore year in high school, I decided like, that's what I want to do. And so I was determined at that point to go to William Woods. And that was, it was an all-female school.
That's exactly what I was thinking there.
They'll accept it to William Woods.
I was gonna say, are you just the most brilliant pioneer on the face of the planet?
If you're gonna, if you're gonna be known for something, you know, but actually, I think, or no, I know that there were plans for William Woods to go coed at that time, about that time, anyway. I don't know if I necessarily had anything to do with pushing them over, you know, that edge, but.
Kathy wrote a letter.
Kathy McKinley, who is also William Woods graduate, wrote, wrote a, a letter of recommendation, as well as probably a letter of influence to the president and the faculty to try and say, hey, this kid wants to do this, and I think you should give him a shot. I think when I first went there, there were a half a dozen equestrian students, and then the soccer team and the volleyball team. And we all lived in one dorm. And, and it was, it was an interesting experience because there were some, there were some ladies there that didn't, didn't want us there. Not that we have, not that we, you felt it a little bit, not that there was like protests or anything like that. But it was probably a college experience that no one else has ever had. And it was, but man, Mary and I were just talking this morning, we had a lot of fun in college and a lot of our.
Wonderful opportunities and experiences.
And actually, when I got to William Woods, I had a lot of doubts. So once I got there, funny enough, I had a lot of doubts about whether I wanted to be a horse trainer at that point. So I did not, in fact, get an equestrian science degree. I was more or less pre-law. Okay. And, but I got, I got a lot of opportunities. And this is one of the things I say about William Woods that is unique, is that I got a lot of opportunities there, being a small liberal arts college, that I never would have gotten anywhere else.
Very true.
I had to work on a project where I got an article, a history article published. I worked, for undergraduates is unheard of.
Yeah, for sure.
Then a lot of, you know, I got to go to Japan for part of the summer. There are just tons and tons of opportunities that wouldn't be afforded at a bigger school. That's why Mary and I love, love a small school and especially William Woods.
Yeah, absolutely. Same, same thing, you know, small liberal arts school in Wisconsin. Though I was not the first guy to go there, though. There were others there already. So you both came in, you kind of had some doubts in college about being a professional horseman. But how did the two of you end up together? Because I know you met there, obviously.
This is another great story. I was.
Hence the prompt.
Such a, I was, I was so excited to be somewhere, which again, rural northern California, I'd never been near a Walmart, McDonald's, anything. That was an hour, about an hour away from all of that stuff. And so I thought I had hit like the big city. Fulton, Missouri to me was like big time. And I, if you know Ashley Eisenhower, Tiffany Wheeler, and all of them, Alison Dierdorf, Julie Broder, a bunch of them like that. Yeah, they will tell you that I introduced myself. And exactly, I said, hello, my name is Mary Jane Markham. I'm from Fall River Mills, California. It's nice to meet you. And I was just so excited about college. I never doubted wanting to be a horse trainer. Gail Lampy is why I got in the saddle seat part of it, because she said, you want to try it? I said, I would. Basically, every single person I met, I introduced myself to. And so my first memory of Evan was we were at Tucker, I believe. And again, I thought it was like the greatest, well, there goes Mona.
There comes Mona.
I thought it was the greatest thing ever. And so I walked up to Evan and I'm like, hello, my name is Mary Jane Markham. I'm from Fall River Mills, California. And Evan was home soon.
I was terribly home.
And I was like.
I was three hours away from home. I could have driven home to do my laundry.
And I said, I literally said, I'm like, I think college is awesome, you know? And Evan's like, he literally looked at me and he goes, hello, I'm Evan Ork, and I want to go home. And it was like, and Evan would, we called the Ethiopian boy because he was so thin. Tell them how much you weighed.
I weigh, I was about 145 pounds at that point.
Oh, my gosh.
And I was like, I, so all I remember is this really thin guy, fairly nice, that I.
Fairly.
No, you were like so sad, and I was so happy.
You were too sad to be nice.
I was with horses and people and Taco Bell. I mean, how does life get better than that, you know? At a Little Boon's farm in the world is great. So anyway, so we, it was funny, we have this, it's still to this day, this, we got to be this great group of friends. And so he and I, it was John Field was there. And I mean, so we kind of all got, I mean, just kind of fell together because of the horses and then developed a friendship. And so we were, we never dated in college. We were like just very good friends. And I would say that Evan was one of my very best friends.
And hopefully still am. But we, it was funny, because we, we were always very close, best friends. But we ran with different groups. But like when we were at a party, or we were at a function or something like that, we would always find each other and dance together, or it was like.
We did a lot of trips to Kentucky, the Callaway Hill sale.
Road trips and stuff like that. So, yeah, it was, it's funny how, how things work out as hard as you try and push them into a mold. You, it was like you woke up one day, and it's like when we, when I proposed to her, it was kind of like, wow, yeah, we're, we're in love.
So Evan went to law school, and I helped move him in. And I was in graduate school because I, if I didn't want to be a horse trainer, I wanted to teach at the college level. And my dad and mom very much encouraged me to get my master's degree. And I got my master's degree in education and worked for Virgil Helm. So I felt like I was kind of getting the best of both worlds, where I was working, but I wasn't completely out of college. And so when that was happening, because he was in law school for all of five minutes.
It was a whole week. It was a whole week.
We, we were together a lot. And it was funny, everybody knew Evan's dad probably knew the most because we bickered then like we bicker now. And so, and actually, the funniest part is we went to a wedding in California. I asked him if he'd go with me. I had a friend from high school was getting married, and we flew out there. And fought the whole time, and said, we either need to start dating or stop being friends because this is not working out. I guess that meant that we started being dating.
It's romantic.
And that's.
And we've been together ever since.
And for everybody out there, that's the things that love songs are written about.
That is, yes.
And so then we've been together ever since. When I called Alison Dierdorf and told her we were engaged, she really went, what? Oh, oh, okay. Yeah, I think. Because it was not this like big love, I mean, it really wasn't. It was like, we were best friends that became more. And then it evolved into, you know, what it is now.
That's right. All the kids and all the horses, it's great.
The stuff that dreams.
The stuff the dreams are made of. Well, hey, listen.
Yeah. And then there's one other really cool story. Our junior year of college, I worked for Peter and Kim Cowherd, and I took care of a Sweet Tree when she won the Walkout State. And Kim and Peter said if I came back, I could ride her during like a spring break. So we came to their house, and there's a picture on our wall of me riding a Sweet Tree. And then took the picture. And all we were was friends. And then that was, so that was kind of something neat, you know?
And you both escaped the friend zone. There you got.
Yeah.
That's unheard of.
Not to mention, Mary had this sweet burgundy Cadillac, like the dand of the, I mean, it was, so if you're gonna go on a road trip, you want to go, you want to go in a tank.
In style. You want to go in style, man.
Absolutely. And style and comfort.
Yeah.
Okay. So you get out of college, you get out of law school after your week. What happens next? I mean, you're, you're engaged, or you engaged before you go to work in North Carolina. What, how does the next, you know, bit transpire?
The summer between my junior and senior year, my mother passed away suddenly, which kind of threw me for a loop. So my senior year is a little bit of a haze.
Yeah.
But, and then, so I graduated, I worked, gosh, I worked at the Missouri State Archives for part of the summer, Callaway Hills for part of the summer, and then, and then went home because my, with, to see my dad and kind of hang out there for. And then I answered, my dad was like basically kind of like, you need to get a job regardless. And so I answered an ad in the paper for, to teach, to teach riding lessons. And it was Paul LaBriney. And so I spent several months there, maybe almost a year, and kind of said, hey, I guess I'm gonna, you know, I guess this is my calling. Then I distinctly remember September 11th, because I had, I had the, I had the day off. And Mary was stuck in an airport in Arizona. You were doing an Arab judges clinic.
Wow.
And so she was stuck there. And that, so again, that's a little bit of a haze, but also just, and then I went to work for Tom Bombolus at Glenmore.
And while he was working there, I was in graduate school, and I worked for Virgil Helm, which was the best experience ever. And I learned, and then when I was getting ready to graduate, Virgil told me that I needed to be around people that liked to talk.
Because as you can imagine, the conversations between Virgil and Mary might have been slightly one-sided.
And I learned so much about the Colts, but I loved teaching riding lessons, and I loved amateurs and everything like that. And I felt like, I mean, such a foundation. Virgil is an amazing horseman, and Sandra is such a wonderful person. They feel like family. They have, I mean, and it's funny how we've connected through the years. But anyway, so I started interviewing at different jobs, and he told me about Cash Level. And so I interviewed, and I remember seeing Cash for the first time. Parker picked me up and his personality was just, I mean, they had the horses, they had the lessons, the excitement and all that. And I called Evan and I said, I'm going to North Carolina. And Evan said, well, I guess I am too. Yet again, like, oh, I love you, Mary, you know? And then he proposed to me after that. And so we were engaged. And then you interviewed with Peter and Kim?
Yeah. And so if we're coming to North Carolina, again, I needed, I needed, I guess, I need to have a job.
Need a gig.
So I went to, went to work for Kim and Peter.
For a year.
And for a year. And we, we.
Commuted.
Yeah, we lived there, right close to the farm in Statesville. So Mary drove. And then after a year, it was time to get married.
And I had worked for Peter and Kim for two summers. And they're exceptional, exceptional horsemen. And if you ever want to learn how to take care of a horse and do things right, there, it was, it was, I felt like.
Pretty good foundation right there, yeah.
It was a great move for Evan. And I know the foundation that I got from them, you know? I think that when Evan talks about being, like, I still to this day, we are in the same show circuit.
Right.
But it's, we look up to them. Like, you know what I mean? Like, I feel like we're like, God, I hope they're proud of us. We both worked for them and learned a lot from them. And anyway, so yeah, that's how, and so then we got married. And the commute got tough for me because I taught so many riding lessons and everything. And I think it was natural progression, you know?
And so I went, so we bought a house and moved to Winston-Salem, where I started working for, for Cash as well. And that was, that was a new experience too. That was the first time we experienced working together.
Ah, yes, okay.
And I didn't like it. Because Cash had to tell me, he said, Mary, I don't know what you want him to do here if he's not allowed to work horses. That got better, but at first it was not good.
And that, and so another great.
Newly married.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No money. And I hated it that he had worked my horses, so.
Our pastor, right before we got married, who had been, been my pastor for a long, long time, he said, now, you do realize that, that some of the most stressful things in life are, are getting, getting married, changing jobs, and moving. And you're, you're doing all three of them at the same time.
Just get it all out of the way. It's like a Band-Aid, you know?
It was, it was stressful. It's a lot. But, but, but we, you know, jumped in with both feet, every, just about everything we've done. So.
Yeah. Mary, tell me about the mayor. Tell me about Our Charming Lady and that experience of getting, getting that opportunity, I guess, is.
Yeah, I think that, like I said, I'll never forget the, it's, Evan says it best, you don't go find horses like that. You know what I mean? Like, I think that that starts it all, is that things like that happen. It's just like the Jack and Donna Finch. You don't go find people, that something special like that happens. It's a once in a lifetime situation, you know? But I think that, you know, it's important to start, like, I guess, from the start where when somebody says to you, Jack says, if you ever find something special, let me know, you know?
Yeah.
And Cash showed me a video. And I remember I saw the video and I'm like, oh, my God, this is the neatest horse ever, you know? And Donna, and then I called Donna, and I said, Donna, we found her. And Donna said, what are we looking for? You know, because again, they weren't looking for a horse. We were just talking about something. And Jack Finch had a plane. And, and we got on the plane and it snowed. And I'll never forget, you know, meeting Rob Tanner, who was amazing. And so she was an amazing horse. He was the foundation. And, and he and Jackie, she'd had kind of, I think, all the talent in the world. But, you know, kind of, she was, she's very particular, you know, and not, I wouldn't say easy, and I wouldn't say hard in the sense of that she loved regiment. And I think that she fell into their hands. And then I fell in love with her. We had the right owners, you know, they believed in her, and they believed in me, and they let us do what she needed. I think that the longer I'm away from it, the more I can't believe it happened. If that makes sense, and how special she was and what she did. Having her offspring, we have a, a two-year-old that I think Jack and Don are going to kind of see through what we're real excited about. But all of them in general, seeing her babies is pretty amazing. But I think that like, she's that person that you meet in your life, I guess, is if you say a relationship. And she was like my best friend and my soulmate altogether. I got her and she got me.
Much like, much like me.
Yeah. But we fit. And it just, it fit from the start. And then she had the owners that saw that and wanted that. And at the beginning, like I said, like, for Cash to give me that opportunity was unbelievable. And also too, I'm going to say this, though, the one thing that I learned about her was I never realized the pressure I was under and that Evan, in all seriousness, how much he supported me. You know what I mean? Because I didn't think I was a wreck, but I really was, you know? And at the end, the longer it went, the harder it got, you know what I mean?
Sure, yeah. The pressure of winning, yeah.
God, look at what this horse has done. But also the respect I had for her because she was such a show horse, is such a show horse. We brought her out at the, at the, just to like walk her in at the Futurity, at the, for the Carolinas Futurity. We brushed her, literally. And she heard the announcer, and she parked out and looked down, looked down the aisle way like, it's time. And I was like, that never leaves you. You know what I mean? It was amazing. She came out, she stood up. And the other thing we've always said about her too, she shines, like, not because I brush her. Like, she has a way to her and a way, like, she's out in that field in your life. My God, she doesn't even have a knot in her mane, you know? And I go out there and visit her a lot, because sometimes when times are tough, I feel like she's the kind of like the foundation of it, you know?
Yeah.
And she's her own entity. And it's just amazing what she's done. And then, like I said, that what she was is a show horse, but what she's produced as well is just, I think that her babies have just begun. And then now having the Sedgfield's legacy, it's just.
Oh, yeah, it's done, yeah.
So special, you know what I mean? And I just feel honored to be a part of it, you know? I've never felt like, oh, I was the greatest horse trainer. I just felt like I was the luckiest person who tried to do a really good job by her, you know?
Right place at the right time, but you got to make the most of the opportunity, you know?
Yes, absolutely.
So we know where the high caliber name came from, from the horse, from the original horse. What was the original vision and kind of like your dream when you decided to go out on your own, the two of you?
The dream was, is.
She's the vision, she's the vision. She's the visionary.
That, that the whole thing is, is that, and this is incredibly cheesy, but it's the God's honest truth. When I was 14 years old, my brother died in a car accident. He died five miles from our house, three days before Christmas, December 22nd. It was horrible. And it was devastating for my family. It was devastating for myself. My horse and my horse trainer were, her name was Shirley Hall, and High Caliber were what got me through. On the day I got married, he died. And Evan looked at me, and he said, we'll name the farm after him. Horses truly are who I am, but who, what saved me. And I think that I am unbelievably competitive, as is Evan. But our barn is nothing if it isn't purpose. And I feel like you can be competitive and make a difference. And I think that we are absolutely the dream. And I think that we are absolutely the dream. Because we're just two know-nothing kids that love horses. And when, and I truly believe what brought Evan and I together was when his mom died, um, it was devastating. And I got it because I'd lost my brother.
Yeah.
And so I was kind of the friend that was hard on him, you know what I mean? And, and he was the one that says, you don't know how I feel.
And that hasn't ever stopped.
No, it hasn't. So I think the vision was, is to be, um, and also to expect more of our people and of our, our kids and our amateurs. And to ask them to be their very best. And then to put that in the showroom and, and put it all together. And I think that's the vision of all of it. And I think that even like the Our Charming Lady piece of it, she was an underdog. You know what I mean? She was the horse that, that was, man, if she ever put it together, she'd make it, you know? And so I think the vision of High Caliber was, is that, you know, we do show horses, we do mares and babies, we teach riding lessons. We do all those people, all those different things. We want to do it well, but we want people to leave a little bit better. And to work hard and, and to be a little bit bigger than themselves. Is that a fair statement? Because I think that that's what it's done for us, you know what I mean? And um, and my horse trainer, when I left, um, she told me, she said, just do for others like I did for you. And I have truly tried to live my life by that, you know? Um, and that's, I think, the vision of High Caliber.
I think the, the, an important piece of that i- i- in that, that last little bit there where she said, do, you know, do what I've done for you, do, do for others is, is a really big piece of that. Um, uh, my next thing was gonna be, where do you find all these endless reserves of energy to teach a million lessons a day and work all the horses? And is that where that comes from? Is that, you know, that thing that's just buried inside you?
I think so. I, I think so. I, I just, I just love it. I love horses, but I also really like people. I mean, and I really. Uh, she made me see things in myself I didn't know I had. Um, my parents had nothing to do with horses. And so they just said, my dad said, do what you love. You know what I mean? So I watched my parents start from nothing. I watched them sacrifice so I could do it. And then like for Evan, it's like, you know, Evan, the first horse he really ever owned was a school horse. You know, when you say like, that we bought together, you know? And then I think something else that's very telling is like, you know, our first school horse that was purchased was um, his name's Lance. He's the famous Morgan that's done World Cup and everything. We bought him from Cindy Mignier.
Oh, really?
Payments on it. And she let us, cause she's like, I'm not gonna give them to you, but I know you have no money. You know what I mean?
So, well, and Joe, Joe Cornell started, I think two or three, two or three, then again, we made payments.
So it's like, I feel like I, I'm incredibly driven by the fact that this made me, you know what I mean? And I'm lucky to be successful in the business, but then, and then like Gail Lampy, you know? She didn't, she literally said to me, sorry, Ms. Lampy, well, I guess you keep showing up, so I'll give you a job, you know? It wasn't like, oh, Mary, you're the most talented person out there. But I mean, and then like, you know, I, I, working for Virgil, who was kind and hardworking, Peter and Kim started from nothing. And, and different things like that, but I believe in it. And I do believe that if I don't work to bring people, I love it. Scott Matten said, you know, people raise horses, we're raising customers. And so you gotta teach people to be in this business.
Yeah.
I just love it. I mean, every day, I, I get tired and I get cranky like everybody else. It's even like right now, I just miss our people, you know? I miss, I miss them and I value them. I always have, but I value them more. And so I guess that's the, your wife does a lot of what I do, you know what I mean? And I, I never, I wrote down, you know, William Woods, they say, what do you want to do? I said, God, I hope I show in the ladies' three gated class. So, I mean, I never thought, my God, I'd show in the, in the walk trot stake. And I remember looking around thinking, crap, dude, they're gonna find out that I don't belong here. You know what I mean? But Jack and Donna believe in me, so by God, I gotta rock, you know? And so I don't know, I just, I believe in it. I believe in what it is. And it's ungodly expensive, but it's worth it, you know? And so, but I, and I like it, you, you said that we're doing stuff, you know, we've done today, we've made 5,000. Tell them what we've done, Evan.
We've been folding.
5,000.
Little mailer, trifold mailer things that.
Where you color.
A beautiful idea from Mary.
Of my idea that Meredith Ross and Lauren Blue and Christine and Kelly, they're folding them right now, hating me.
Well, I'm glad I could take you away from that project.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Very good. Oh, I have to talk to Toffees, alright.
That's, well, I did actually say it. So I guess that's the vision of all of it, but I, I believe in the foundation of it, you know? Because I always say there would be no Our Charming Lady if I didn't teach Donna Finch a riding lesson, you know what I mean? So it's um, people talk about breeding horses, they're right, but you also gotta have people to buy the horses. So Evan loves the babies and the young horses and believes in that process. And I believe in the people. And so it's, I think it's easy when you love it. And I, I believe in it and I want it to be better um, for us, but also for our community. And so.
Yeah.
And I just, I'm kind of, I don't know, psycho like that, I guess.
Vivin', drivin'.
Driven is better than psycho, yes. Well.
You know, I would say one of, also one of the things that Mary doesn't touch on, but is very important. And um, is educate, like she says, educating people, but when you're bringing people into riding lessons, you have to answer a lot of the same questions. And you have to figure out how to explain what we do. For example, we had a, a, a riding lesson mom text us and she was like, it was, it was a picture of a very successful horse and a very successful trainer.
Yeah, this is a good one.
She's like, you need to explain to me why this is one of the best horses ever.
The guy's not sitting up straight.
He's not sitting up straight. His heels aren't down. He's ju, you know, he doesn't.
And that horse's legs look funny.
Oh, my gosh.
And they're like, that's the best horse ever.
And so we have to, we, we do, you have to, you ha, and some of what, a lot of what we do is hard to explain. It's intangible and it.
Yeah.
It's feelings and it's like, well, why is that horse better than this horse? Well, it's got presence. Well, what's presence? Well, boy, you can really get into some philosophical questions about some of this stuff. And it's hard to explain and it's, you don't want to oversimplify it, but if you make it too complicated and they look at your cross side, you just need, you know?
And you can't say, just trust me. You have to, you have to believe in what you're selling and you have to sell it. And I think that's why we're passionate about it too, because luckily we believe in it.
There is, there, there is an element of trust, a big element of trust that goes into that. But um, you have to maintain that and it has to be legitimate because if people trust you, they'll follow you through the fire. If they get burned, they'll, they'll, they'll walk away.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so we talked a little bit, obviously there, we've talked a lot about a couple of big successes. Is there a, a, a single moment of success, like something that you guys are both really proud of? Or each individually, a moment that, that you're proud of, of a success that you've had together?
There's a ton. Um, I think to this day though, like Susan Hollowell, for you, that's something that was incredible.
Yeah, there were, there was a, I think it, it might've been the first time I ever showed at Louisville. And I had, I had a fantastic ride and I knew I was having a fantastic ride and I didn't get a ribbon. And it didn't matter, cause I knew and a lot of the people around me knew. And that was, that was good. That was excellent. And then my first world.
Same year.
The same year, my, I trained my first world champion, uh, which was Susan Hollowell and Catalytic.
Oh, wow. Yeah.
And then I won two horse, two classes with a couple of horses that I trained that year. And then I, more generally, personally, I get way more satisfaction when um, putting combinations in the ring that are successful. Especially when they're combinations, like Mary says, that are a little bit underdog or um, the expectations maybe feel like are, are not, are not high. And it feels good to go in there and, and make something happen.
I would say probably for me, I, I will never forget, like, Let's Talk was probably, you know, there, we've had, we've been so fortunate on a lot of different ones. But he was probably something I'm the most proud of for us as a team in our relationship, proud of McGee. Um, and also excited about what the industry is because we bought him from Dina Lopez. And um, we had trouble carrying him. And we took him to the first horse show. I thought it was gonna be easy. I thought he was a superstar. McGee went and rode him. My God, there, it was wild. It looked beautiful, but it was wild as hell. And, and you kind of take a breath. And then Evan showed him and Evan, they called for a second trot and Evan kicked him and we're like, oh my God, you know?
Yeah, I was feeling good about that one.
What did we buy? You know, and we learned, that was probably where I think that it's not necessarily Let's Talk, but what we learned about the process. Um, because the Bosworths stuck with us, you know? Uh, and, and they bought an expensive horse that was nice, that was bought for their daughter, that didn't get on him for a while. And then I had to have the nerve to call up Dina and go, I need help. And then for, I, I, I respect her so much to this day, she said, bring him over. And she didn't train him for me, she taught me. And she taught McGee. And I got on a lesson horse, you know? And I learned and McGee learned, um, Evan and I never had harsh words over that horse. He supported me, I supported him. The Bosworths, we, only thing we ever did was discuss what we needed to do. You know what I mean? What's our next plan? Um, and then of course, the famous Louisville where we're going down the chute and McGee starts kind of hyperventilating. And she got, and I had to make a call and quite frankly, Evan's like, what's wrong? You know, and I'm like, Evan, she can't breathe.
Yeah.
What do you mean she can't breathe? She's sitting on the horse. I said, Evan, she's wheezing.
I'll put her up there, she'll be fine.
And um, and that, you would think that when she won at Louisville that time, you know, that was pretty incredible and coming back from that. But probably the neatest, most thing was, is that we had, again, um, they had a two horse workout at um, the American Oil.
Kansas City.
Dreamy, yep. And um, that horse was exceptional, undefeated all year long, Hunter's Last Chance, last, I mean, last class and um, and McGee won. And, but it was, we had to believe in that horse. We had to believe in the process. I've never worked so hard in my whole entire life. I've never been so nervous in my whole entire life. But also McGee had to believe in me. And her parents had to follow us through. And so I think it made us better horse trainers, better people and understand the dynamic of all of it. So it wasn't winning, it was the whole thing. We were lucky enough to tell the wonderful story at the end, you know what I mean? Um, and it doesn't always end that way, but that was probably something that, and I think that's why Catalytic was the same way though too. Because Cash gave you the opportunity and that horse was tough as all get out, you know? And Susan was cool as a cucumber, you know?
I, I think a, a good thing that Mr. Bosworth always said about Let's Talk was, he was one of the best investments he made. Because he got probably four different horses.
Yes.
As, as McGee improved and he, you know, as McGee stepped up to him, then he'd rise to another level and up and up and up. And, and I think that, that there was a lot of truth to that. Everyone in that situation learned so much from that horse.
But I think we were better for all of our customers because of.
Oh, absolutely. And, and you don't, and, and he's also an example of not giving up.
Don't you dare quit. But, and also though, industry wise, what a representation to Dina. You know, she could've left me hanging or she could've said to them, give me that horse back and I'll fix it for you and we'll go on.
Gotcha.
And he stepped up and she said, I'm gonna teach you. And, and I always call her the boss now anyway, boss lady. Um, and if she watches this, I still don't call her back like I should. But um, so um, anyway, but that, I, I, I don't know, that renewed my faith in, in it. And also they, the Bosworths always said it was humility on my end, but see, I'd felt the same way about Rob Tanner with Our Charming Lady, you know what I mean? Cause, and then I was fortunate enough, like with Jack and Donna, they believed in me and they believed in her and we just went on, you know? But this time with Let's Talk, there was a child involved. And so that was a different level, you know? It wasn't me doing it, it was me teaching somebody else. But Rob Tanner did the same thing. I'm like, I can't train this horse. And he said, she's not porcelain, she won't break, ride the damn horse. And I was like, okay.
That sounds, so growing up riding with Rob and Jackie, that sounds like something Rob would say.
You probably know what I'm talking about.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, Jim Cherry and I, Jim Cherry and I have gotten together and had, you know, had our stories about riding with, for Rob as teenage boys and going to the end of the driveway to cry.
Yeah.
They were, yeah, Rob was an incredible horseman and, and Jackie and Dina, I go, go way back with them as well. So it's always fun to hear, hear stories about them. Going forward here, favorite type of student to teach for you, Mary? And I've got one for you, Evan, as well. Your favorite type of student to teach?
Determination. Talent has nothing to do with it. I, I've just gotta have somebody that's willing to try and open-minded. Uh, I think I am learning, the older I get, I am much more unconventional than I realize. And you're laughing. I know, it's just taken, but, but um, and I, they gotta believe, you know what I mean? Because you gotta, I, I, I do best with blind faith, cause I have learned, um, I want you to do it first and understand it second. And that is secondary to a lot of learning. And so I have to have somebody that is determined enough to deal with me, cause I'm not easy and I'm incredibly aggressive. And therefore you gotta make it through with the determination, but you gotta go, okay, I believe in the final product. Cause sometimes the middle part doesn't make sense. And um, that's been a, that's, so that's determination and you gotta believe, gotta believe in the process. I'm a huge process person. You can win and I can be very angry. And um, because to me, winning is, we are subjective. So if I say good job, to me, that's more important than the ribbon you get.
Hmm.
Ask any of my kids that.
Evan, your favorite type of horse to train?
I do better with a horse that's a little bit country. Um. I don't know, it's, it's.
Little honorary.
A little honorary, a little tough, you know? Um, that's, I'll, you obviously like, the hardest part about a really nice horse is staying out of its way. And you, when you've got a really nice horse, they, they, they do so much on their own. And you're just like, gosh, should I be doing more? Should I? And then, and then I get a little bit ahead of myself and I want to do too much too fast, which Mary will remind me of. Um, but uh, I, you know, obviously you want, you want the, you want the nicest one, but I think I do best with something on, a little bit on the tougher, the tougher side.
Okay.
And uh, uh, something game, really, really good game.
Yeah. What's something that you guys haven't accomplished yet or you haven't tried yet, but you hope to going forward?
My dream is to have a win in every juvenile amateur class at Louisville.
That's a good one.
Probably, yeah, that's, I would like to have an accomplishment of that. And um, I would like to see Evan have the opportunities in open classes that I have had.
I want to take a horse that, that we've raised, uh, uh, or one of our customers has raised. Um, and, and, and win. I've gotten, I got really close a couple of years ago with.
Sedgefield's Legacy.
Sedgefield's Legacy, um, and I'm super proud of him, especially now he's turned, looks like he's gonna turn out to be a fabulous breeding horse. You know, and that's everybody. And everybody loved to win the gated stake someday.
Right, right.
I had the opportunity to show it at once and.
With Hyconium?
With Hyconium. And that was just, again, it's a little bit surreal and it's a little bit cloudy, cause you're like, again, when you're a kid looking up at this stuff.
Oh, my gosh, yeah.
I'm never, I'm never gonna get to do that, but um, just, just, you know, Vicky Bird gave me the opportunity to do that. She said, go in there and have a good time. That's what, that's what I did and, and that's uh, that's pretty special.
And I, I would like to show one of Our Charming Lady's babies at Louisville once. That's a good one. Cause Evan does a lot of the young horses, but um, I would love to have the opportunity to do that because she meant so much to me. It does mean so much.
Tell me about, I mean, and I have one more question left, but you mentioned Vicky and now I want to go down that path just a little bit. Tell me about your relationship with Vicky. I mean, she just like the biggest cheerleader mascot. I don't even know what you call her at this point for High Caliber. Just, just a wonderful lady.
Evan and I literally, because right now you have a little bit more time on your hands, we were talking about her. You know, the only thing you can say about Vicky Bird is you just hope you can be like her and make her proud. Because the joy that she takes in every ounce of the horse business, cleaning a stall, walking a horse, taking a lesson. A good horse, all of it is, is just like, you're like, man, I wish I, it's like a, I wish I thought that good. Like I wish I was that good of a person, you know?
Right.
Um, and I, it's funny because a lot of the times people talk about like High Caliber Stables. I often feel like she, we own High Caliber, Vicky does not, but I still feel like, I still kind of feel like she's our boss. You know, and in a good way, because she's that person that has that, um, she has the experience that we hope to have someday. Um, but I mean, I feel like I respect her so much. Um, and then at the same time, she's funny and I love giving her a hard time because she gets everybody's name wrong. Uh, and you know, I mean, everybody's name wrong, including ours sometimes, but um, it, it's, she's just a wonderful human being. And, and I wish everybody had the, I hope everybody has the opportunity to talk to her because she's, she doesn't know a stranger. And then once you talk to her, the only thing you can hope is to be a little bit like her, you know what I mean? And she's just a part of this farm from top to bottom, you know? And um, she's the foundation of who we are. And I don't know how it happened that way. It all started one day when nobody was there and she and I went to lunch and we've been friends ever since, you know, pretty much. You know, Cash is, and then it's just been that way. And I will also say, the thing I'm the most thankful for is, in all honesty, her relationship with Evan. Um, no one will replace Joanna or she, it was an incredible mother and Mike is a wonderful father. But I know that Joanna is looking down and knows that Vicky is helping Evan. You know, and, and, and is that foundation and that person that, that supports him, but also sets him straight, which I appreciate. Now supports him more because there's nothing he can do wrong, which makes me angry.
Only occasionally does she reprimand me and it's, it's usually, it's, it's usually well deserved.
And I, and I'll say this though too, what we all could take from her though too. She rides with those kids and she's out there to whoop them and I love that. I mean, I think she chases everybody around the arena, no matter who you are.
Oh yeah.
That's the beauty of her.
Gunning for them.
Oh yeah. She's, she's the um, the matriarch of high caliber.
For sure.
And, and she is a, she is a mentor for us in business and in, in our personal lives. And she's, like Mary said, sometimes you're like, oh gosh, it's like, you do something here, like I shouldn't have done that. And you don't want, you don't want to disappoint Vicky. Cause again, it's like, she's not gonna yell at you. She's just gonna give you a look. And you're like, oh man, it's, it is. Yeah, exactly. But she's so good. Um, she's such a good mentor for the kids in the barn, for our children, uh, for us personally. She's, and she's just delightful to be around and um.
She's as good as she seems.
Yeah.
I wish there was a fault in her.
Yeah, right.
She knows everybody's names.
And she, and she sometimes.
And lies about it. Oh, that, I knew who that was. I'm like, no, you don't. She knows them, but not their names.
There you go. Know the face, you know? All right. So we crowdsourced some questions. Uh, these came in Facebook, Instagram, you know, what have you. There's an interesting one for uh, trainers and judges perspective. What do you think makes a nice country pleasure horse?
I like a good moving, um, natural going. I like stuff that looks easy on a country pleasure horse, you know? I like a horse that walks and it looks real, that their tail carriage is nice, that it doesn't seem. I think sometimes um, we had a horse for um, Yoris Patriot Sage.
Yeah.
And um, he was one of our first world champions with Laura Plant, actually one of the ones we bought on our own at first. And, and he was beautiful and he didn't have much motion, but it was one of those horses, the Groms had him as well. Um, but I remember, you know, he did so well at Louisville and it was like, there were horses that did extremes. But for everything that he lacked, he had quality, he had presence. It just made, it just looked effortless. And I think that that's kind of like what I look for in a country pleasure horse.
Yeah, I think, um, I think, and I, this is a hard one to explain in the sense that in our minds, I think you have these ideals. And I think there are horses that fit particular divisions and you see it in your head and it's not necess. Again, like Mary said, there may be a horse out there that has extreme motion, but it just doesn't quite fit the, the proportions maybe. Or the quality, or you have that horse out there that has a super long neck, but no, no motion. It looks a little disproportionate and, and uh.
I like overall picture.
Yeah. I think, I think, I think quality and like Mary said, it needs to look effortless in my, the, the horses that look like it's doing, uh, doing something well. But with a least amount of effort, I think especially in a country.
That's good. Yeah.
And then looking happy.
Yeah. Who is your oldest lesson horse?
Norman.
Norman?
Yeah, Norman is a Morgan. I don't know his registered name. Jennifer Hazen owns him and Sammy Hazen.
I think he's 29.
Yeah, he's somewhere around thirty and Ursula.
Oh Ursula, but she's retired.
Yeah, Ursula's retired. We've got a lot of them.
We've got interesting names for school horses, cause sometimes they come in and they have a name. But sometimes because we have so many, we have the bridles by alphabetical order. For example, a horse named Frito, because we were looking for an F and that's her name.
Pretty great.
We didn't want to move bridles around.
Yeah. When you're, when you're as large as we are in certain forms, it's not, what's your favorite name? It's, are you the letter that you need?
Are you right?
And often, and often they get named after whoever they came from.
Oh yeah, that's always a good one. Yeah. I uh, I, I rode a horse named Claude once back in the day.
When you talk about country pleasure horse, I'm gonna get in trouble from Kelly Lockhart, because of course we have really, really read who, you know, we just won with at Louisville. And I wanted to say about that horse, expressive, you know, she, she has something. Yeah, I like an expressive horse. So there you go, Kelly shout out.
Perfect. Uh, what's your favorite part of teaching lessons?
Becoming a member of um, of the, I have a customer and a good friend that calls it the parenting team. Um, and then with adults reminding them what they're capable of. Uh, just that's, so, so for kids, it's for kids and young adults, it's the parenting team. We have kids that are, that we've taught now that are getting married, because I'm aging ourselves and that are graduating and going on to, you know, different parts of their lives. And I still feel like we're one of the people that they call.
That's awesome.
And that is awesome. And then for the adults, the reminder that it's not over and of their value. And that they're allowed to enjoy worry and be excited and be competitive still.
I think one of our, I like, I like those moments where people are like, okay, that finally makes sense. Those light bulb moments or those epiphanies where, and, and sometimes my role becomes, cause Mary has, Mary is, thinks out loud. And sometimes my role becomes translating or putting, or, or putting it into different words. And, and, and that's, that's not an insult to Mary. That's, that's me knowing her so well. And we're changing, changing the words a little bit so somebody else can understand the goal. And that's really cool, working together. And when somebody really gets a concept or really gets you, they're like, okay, now I understand.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a cool feeling.
Yeah. Um, what would be your advice for a trainer just getting started?
Be realistic and um, keep going. Because I think that one of the things that I think is unfortunate is like, like Evan said, you know, you were talking about great successes. And one of his greatest, he feels one of his greatest successes is showing at Louisville when he didn't get a ribbon, but he made out a great. I think that we have unintentionally, and I don't know why, and I don't think we need to blame anybody, but it's like, if you don't win at Louisville, you're not good enough. There's, you know what I mean? Like we've just had that, and I would love to say that, I mean, I just told you, one of my biggest goals was winning all the different classes at Louisville. But, which it is, but it's like, realistic is, I got somebody started. I have raised a cult. It is in the show ring now. I never understood until we've read, we've read some of our own horses. And then keep going is, this is tough. There is, on the best day, it's tough. On the worst day, it's tough. Um, it is not easy and it's not, not, and especially like, I don't want people to say, oh, well, this time of year now is tough. It's always tough. Um, you know what I mean? And, but tough in the sense of, I feel like, you know, it's a challenge to understand it financially. It's an under, it's a challenge um, emotionally, um, because what we do, we invest ourselves so much into it, you know? Um, and so you gotta keep going and, and a lot of, you, you learn from the mistakes, you know? And that's the truth. People say that all the time. Uh, I have learned more from what I've done incorrectly and then owning up to it and then going forward again. So you gotta keep going, but you gotta be realistic. And it's like, it's, if you don't have a horse that can't go to Louisville, that doesn't mean you can't have a great barn and it doesn't mean you won't. So start, you know, be proud of every step that you take in a business.
And you have to, when you set your, when you set your, well, you have to have goals. You have to set goals. And like Mary said, they have to be realistic, but I think it's very, very important to have good people in your corner. Whether they're professionals of successful professionals, it doesn't matter what kind of business. You need a good, a good accountant, a good attorney, um, a good banker. There are, there are options and avenues out there for small businesses. That are, that, that you need to explore because this is a, this is an interesting business and it's very unique. In compared to any other business. So um, people out there that you can bounce ideas off of. And then you have to be prepared, you have to be prepared for the ups and downs. And you can't get too low when it gets, when you get down and you can't get too high and too confident when things go well. Because inevitably, you know, oh yeah, well, Mary won the walk trot stake. Well, some, that means somebody's getting ready to quit. Or, you know, a horse is gonna get sick or somebody's gonna say that they, they can't do this anymore. Or, you know, you're gonna have a, a baby get sick.
I think that we just heard a quote that I love, because I love quotes anyway. Change is always gonna happen. Um, growth is a choice.
That's really good.
Like, and I think that that's like Evan was talking about, you know? Again, that was my comment about winning at Louisville. Winning at Louisville doesn't pay the bills. So you do win at Louisville, that's one horse. That's not a business.
No.
You know, and, and there's, I, I, I enjoy, that's a goal, but um, this winter, Kaitlyn Creekmore racked a horse for the first time, right? And she and I sat in the middle and cried and she'll probably be mad at me for saying that, because she actually showed emotion. But either way, but I mean, I've seen, you know, I taught Kegel James when she was younger and she came back into this. There's so much more to it than just that. And I guess that's where be, like Evan says, setting goals and different things like that. But you know, there's so many great things that are attached to all of it and hard and easy. You know, you buy, anybody that says they always buy the right horse is not telling the truth. Everybody that says they're all bad is not telling the truth. It's just all over the place. You gotta find, which I do not do, hence I am married to Evan.
I think, I think.
I live the high and the low. Let's just call it what it is.
I think, I'll tell you a story about when Mary, the first time Mary won the ladies class with our charming lady. And everybody was on cloud nine. And we, we got back on the, the, we got on the back of, of a golf cart to drive back to the, to the, um, to the barn. And I said, all right, Mary, now what? And she looked at me and she said.
Seriously?
What do you mean? I said, all right, you're, you're 28 years old and you said, you said someday I want to show in the ladies class.
Yeah.
And I said, you want it. I said, so now what? Although at the time she was really ticked off. But if that, if that was our, if that was her only, so, so then you have to say, okay, what do I want to do next? What? And what is my purpose? What is my? At the end of the day, we get more satisfaction out of this, like, like you said, the small successes at the barn than we do over. Now, don't get me wrong, we want to win and we want the best possible horses that we can for the budgets we're given. And I would love to raise, you know, world champions and why?
But we found, we have found though, the, the one, the winning comes when you enjoy the Saturday mornings and you work. And you have the process, because then all of a sudden, it's not just about the winning. And then that process comes in, then my God, you do a lot better. All I think about is winning. It's like Evan always says, don't ever tell us to buy the winner. We're gonna buy the best horse we can, that we can be competitive in that class. And that's something that's really helped us because you're trying to, you know, it, it, then, then it's not just disappointment. And we have found the harder we work on what we have control on, which is the discipline of our horse and our rider and all that stuff like that. We have found more success in the whole scheme of things, you know?
And we try, we, we, I think we've also learned that we have to be very forthright and we have to pound some of those things home. Like I can't guarantee that you're gonna win. And some people want that. I would much rather, you know, under promise and over deliver.
Yeah.
Cause uh, that, and, and you will, I think you will also find that, that when you, you've been out there for a little while, you start to attract people that have similar um, goals and similar values and want the same kind of thing, you know?
Well, you also have, you also have somebody like Vicky as kind of like, you know, like your, your matriarch. But somebody like that teaches the customers how to be good customers too.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And we have like, like for example, you know, um, we've, you know, Grace Weasner now rides with us. You know, our, I would tell you the successes in the ring have been when she started to listen and trust myself and Evan, not her blue ribbons. You know what I mean? And that, and that relationship, and that's something too, that, you know, you learn like, teaching children, you develop that relationship from the beginning. You know what I mean? On a lot of it. But then when people come to you, it's a different kind of development. Both are incredibly rewarding and challenging, but we have found that our success only comes from having the relationships. We have never just said, hi, nice to meet you. Let's get on that horse. And the truth is, is that I like the saying in this harness, and so you have like a merry moment and you have to cry, which is horrible, even with our employees. And I don't mean to, but that's what I do. If I make you cry, then we start to be friends. I don't know.
Okay, it all works out in the end. So a continuation on from that one. How do you go from being, how do you go, uh, successfully go from being a single trainer to a couple training team?
That started with me hating Evan and then it started with me ignoring Evan. And then it finally went to, okay, maybe I need some help. So I think in all honesty now, we work very well together. Um, I think we struggle more with like management issues than we do working together. Um, adding, the truth is, is that the couple part, I think is pretty good. Um, adding Kelly to the mix and having like a, a assistant trainer in that level. We've had some other assistant trainers and we have Meredith who helps us with the riding lessons as well. But someone that's really starting to go to shows and work horses with you, that's tough, because I'm a control freak. But I have learned, and I think that even as a couple, the deal is you're only as good as your team.
Okay.
And that's been the key for me. I am only as good as the team, which means team is not Mary. Well, even though I'd like it to be sometimes, but.
And you have to, you have to, um, you have to build on your strengths. And it's funny because like, I am more of a hard line with the horses and a softie with the kids. And Mary is much more the disciplinarian with the kids. And I'm like, they're like, Mr. Evan, I don't want to do that. I'm like, that's fine. You don't have to do it if you don't want to. No big deal. But, but we, we definitely bring two very different sets of skills to the table that end up complementing each other. The, the, the nice thing, if I don't get along with somebody or I need a break from somebody or a horse. Usually Mary can take it up and, and there are, there are certain people and certain horses that we just click with. So then, so in that kitchen, we're very lucky to, to, to have each other to bounce things off of. And, and like, hey, Mary, you gotta take the lead on this one, because this is, this is.
At this point in our careers, I don't, I think it's, I think age and experience. Now it's what's best for the horse and what's best for the person that we're working with. It's just not about us. It's about our, and again, it's the team, you know what I mean? And it's even way, I have learned that especially here lately caretakers, um, it's no surprise to anybody that knows us. You know, we've definitely worked hard to try to have a family. So that made me and Evan have to work a lot together and depend, I had to depend on him. And he had to take the lead where probably I would have taken the lead more. Um, so, but I'm learning that when all the pieces work together and the goal is, you know, if it's a young horse, the goal is to show it. If it's a, get it, you know, all the different things like that, the more you work on the group together, the better it is. We have found so much more.
And you do, I think the ultimate thing, the ultimate, the number one thing is you have to do what's right for the horse and the rider. And then, so if you're all working towards that goal, and sometimes we have to be there to remind each other of that. And uh, you know, Mary will be like, all right, Evan, you can do that, but is, is the rider gonna be able to do that? And we gotta work it a little bit differently because that bridle isn't gonna work for that person.
And even like, we've gotten to the point that we know Evan needs to be with that person in the warm spring, not Mary. Or Mary needs to be in that, you know, it's, it's for the goal now, you know? And but I, like I said, I think that's time, a lot of.
Yeah.
Conversations.
Well, and I, another thing, and I said this, I think at our camp, that is important for customers and amateurs and kids to know is that there's so much about this, about horses and this business that is trial and error. So you gotta give us a little slack, because sometimes, you know, if you've been working all winter and you go to the first horse show and your whole plan goes to pot, well, you gotta give us, and then we got another day maybe to get ready for the championship.
Right.
You gotta give us a little slack, because it wasn't because we weren't working hard. It just didn't, it didn't go. And there's so many variables in horses and the horse business and horse shows and all that sort of thing that, that, that we don't have control of. So none of us do.
No, for sure. Now, bearing in mind that these are coming from, these are crowdsourced questions. In the High Caliber movie, who plays Mary and Evan? I saved that one for last for a reason. I love it.
Who plays Mary and Evan?
You can answer for each other if you wanna start some tension.
Man.
I think Evan looks like Matthew Perry, but I don't know if he acts like him.
That's why actors, you know, actors act. That's good. Matthew Perry.
I don't know.
I mean, it's. Who do I? I mean, it's, who do I wish, who do I wish?
There you go.
I wish, I wish that Daniel Day Lewis would play me.
Oh, there you go.
But, you know, is there anything about me that's like Daniel Day Lewis? I don't think so, but
I can't see it, but you know, he, listen, he's a tremendous actor.
To have an actor like that play you, you know, that, that I guess that's, what about you, man? I don't know, man.
No. Um, I'm a tough one, man. Uh, shoot, what would you say, Evan?
Uh-oh.
No idea.
Danger Will Robinson, danger.
Maybe that's what, that's a question you should put out on the, you know?
No.
I said, I said, when, when we were playing at the ASAC convention, we played, um, the, uh,
Who do you look like?
The newly, the newlywed show. And I, I told, I said Jennifer Aniston.
Well, Matthew Perry and Jennifer Aniston.
And Daniel Day Lewis. I mean, that's, that is an Oscar, just
I thought she was going to go Dolly Parton, but Mary plays Dolly Parton really well, but then the other way.
Uh, yeah. Yeah, maybe we should just do the, uh, do the Dolly and Kenny.
And Kenny thing again, just rewind that back. Maybe that'll be like our intro to the, you know, to the, uh, podcast here today. It'll be a video of you guys doing that, because that was amazing as well.
But that was a lot of fun. That would, see, that is something that I never would have done if it weren't for Mary.
Yeah.
And I, I have to give her credit for that, because there are a lot of things that, that she has pushed me out of my comfort zone with. I have to temper her a little bit and she's got to push me out of my comfort zone.
For sure.
Well, thank you guys.
And all the time, so.
Well, thank you guys, you're a great team. You're even a great team for podcast interviews here. So that was really good work. And, uh, everybody, thank you for tuning into Trot Talk with Mary and Evan Ohr from High Caliber Stables. Thank you all for listening to Trot Talk. We hope you enjoyed the ride. The ASHA is committed to promoting and protecting the American Satterbred horse for a brighter future full of ASB dreams. I'm Tuffy Owens, keep listening and trot on.